It's a regular board meeting, we're gonna roll right in. Okay, good evening, I call this meeting to order, um, meeting of the Crestwood Board of Education to order at seven seventeen, and invite you all to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jen Moon, can you please take roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Berry.
Yes.
Ms. Salzeyat.
Here.
Ms. Velaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky.
Yeah.
Mr. Sabo.
Yes.
Chair of the Forum.
Thank you, um, approval of the agenda, please. And a minutes.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one board agenda. The minutes from the study session on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the minutes from the special meeting on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the minutes from the meet, regular meeting on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the minutes from the special meeting on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and the check registry dated June first through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Jen Moon, support by Mr. Garcia, that the Board of Education approved the items listed on the consent agenda, which include, um, Board of Education, um, approval, include the July twenty-sixth, twenty-one board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the minutes from the special meeting on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the minutes from the special meeting on June twenty-ninth, and the check registry dated June first through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. All in favor?
Wait, discussion?
Discussion? Go ahead.
Um, I'd just like to add for these minutes, um, I, I'm not sure, like, what was different, or who was doing it, or if you did it in Ja, but, or Kristen, I don't know, but just, um, I wanted to say thank you, because this one had a lot more, um, detail, it had the questions that we, um, had in the last meeting.
I wasn't sure what it was gonna be, sorry.
Plus, um, you know, the answers that were given for the questions asked, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, um, all in favor, any more discussion, anyone else? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any nays? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to our business report. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Nothing from Ms. Morgan?
No. Next agenda is approval of check register.
Here it says recommendation.
For purchase orders.
Purchase orders.
And then.
Presentation, they did the check register in the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Presentation.
Oh, we, we don't.
We have approval of confirming purchase orders on our agenda.
Uh, number four, presentation, Airman Architects Elementary School additions.
There's the attachments for five A one and five A two.
Oh.
There's nothing there on number four, we all have that.
I don't have that, that's why I'm wondering why I don't.
We have business report.
Okay, then you have something different that we have.
Yeah.
That's okay, well, Madam, uh, President, may I, uh, request an amendment to the agenda?
Sure.
Prior to the business report, if we can have our, uh, presentation for elementary school additions for classrooms, not sure why your agenda isn't the same as ours, and maybe just a misprint.
Um, I don't even see it on here, but okay.
Do you want to send it to me, please?
No, I didn't.
Do you?
No, I don't either.
I don't have, okay, that's fine, if we can have the presentation now. Yes, it's on here.
It's on the agenda, it's just not in our.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm going directly from the agenda.
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay, is it?
Yeah, 'cause there's nothing in there in the packet.
Yeah.
That's why, it's on the agenda, it's number four on the agenda.
Yep, it's on here.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, Dr. Masalim, if you can give us some, um, information on this presentation before, is it Ehrman Architects?
Ehrman Architects, yes, so I'd like to invite the team up, please, welcome to the podium, as I, uh, introduce why we're requesting them to present to the Board and to the community today, and if I miss anything, uh, Ms. Morgan, please fill in anything I missed. Uh, so, in our study session, we discussed, um, our current situation with our classrooms, we discussed our numbers, we discussed how we need to look at future, where our, uh, we need to have some larger classrooms due to the previous, you know, outbreak of, of COVID, and in order for us to be prepared for the next five years, we currently need to add classrooms to our elementary school buildings. And as discussed, this will come out of our ESER funding, so I'd like the community to know that by utilizing the resources that we've received from the federal government, we will not be asking taxpayers for any additional funding to help us with this. We are utilizing ESER funds, which is the Emergency Act funds, uh, that were recently released by President Biden and his administration, uh, and I'd like the community to know that ESER one was the original set of funds that came out when the pandemic first hit from, uh, President Trump and his administration, and we were able to use that funding to support our technology and to ensure that every student receive the Chromebook, um, as well as other staffing needs for social emotional learning. ESER two, which is, uh, the current funding that we're looking at to support this, am I correct, Ms. Morgan? Um, ESER two funding is gonna support this project, if, um, you know, if the Board so chooses to move forward with this. Again, not taking any additional tax dollars from our community, and ESER two funding is also supporting us on emotional, uh, our emotional supports in learning with school psychologists, social workers, so on so much. So, as a district, uh, we realize that infrastructure, uh, impacts our ability to service our students, and therefore, we're asking the Board, um, to, to review this potential proposal for us to move forward. And, um, Ms. Morgan, if you'd like to introduce the team, and then I will turn it over to the team.
We have the architects Elizabeth By. And I can't say her last name, so I'm sorry.
Joe Panjerin.
We're with Airman Architects, um, and so we have been looking at.
You want to grab the microphone, I'll just, yep.
Um, we have been looking at, uh, the various elementary schools and potentials for additions. Um, and so the first one that we have is, um, Highview Elementary. Um, and so we have, uh, four classroom addition here that would, um, be located, um, where the current lower elementary school, uh, playground is. Um, within this, um, addition is four classrooms, uh, boys and girls restrooms, and then a storage room. To get us this footprint, uh, we have the separation required by code, so that we are not blocking in any other classrooms' windows. And then, uh, each of the classrooms, um, is amply sized, uh, so that it can be used for many different, uh, uses, not just traditional classroom configuration, it could be art, music, any of those special uses, um, with, uh, additional square footage. And each classroom would have a sink in the classroom for hand washing, um, as well as, uh, potentially LVT flooring, um, which is, uh, very cleanable, um, but also less annual maintenance, with no needs for stripping and re-waxing and all of those, uh, yearly, uh, requirements that the traditional VCT flooring requires. Um, and then, uh, depending on the use of the classroom, we can also provide a, um, a kind of, uh, storytime rug that can be pulled out if it's not required for the use of that classroom, um, for the soft seating kind of area. But also, since it's movable, it's easily cleaned, uh, and disinfected. So those are all things that would be, uh, kind of used within the space. Um, this is a larger view of this addition, um, where we would be continuing the unit ventilator, um, heating, uh, of the space. And then also have the cubbies in the classroom, uh, for student belongings.
My first question is, how many square feet is each classroom?
Uh, each classroom is, uh, nine hundred, in this building, nine hundred and nineteen square feet. We had the target range, um, of nine hundred and ten to nine hundred and twenty square feet per classroom, um, which does give, uh, more space to spread out.
And my second question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, restrooms, where would the restrooms be, are they in the classroom, or?
No, we, um, the existing building, the, um, group restrooms are at the far end, so there was nothing close by in this area for student restrooms, and so we located a group restroom here with, uh, three, um, fixtures for each boys and girls. Um, and that way, if the additions were to continue out over future years, there's group restrooms here, um, and so that would not be needed to extend out.
And then would our current heating, um, system and water system be able to use for this area, or would we have to add additional units?
We haven't done the thorough study of your existing facilities, but with using the like, um, system, hopefully we can tap in, this is where the most recent addition was located here, and hopefully we can extend that loop down into this area.
So the, the quotes, um.
Yes, the, the ballpark estimates.
Right, do not include additional, um, boilers, heating units, water units?
It, it would include the unit ventilators shown here.
Okay.
And it would include tapping into your existing, uh, uh, but also within that range, there is, um, cost available within that range, um, to, should there need to be some type of upgrades, you know, adding some upgrades to the meter, or whatever.
Mr. Sabo.
So the HVAC system you're talking about being tapped into the main school system, and not a separate HVAC system for this four thousand square foot addition?
There would be a unit ventilator in each classroom, which is what is used throughout the rest of the building, and so to, um, to run those, we would extend your, um, your existing hot water loop from your existing boilers.
So no air conditioning in that facility either, then?
We have not even tapped into that.
Mr. Noon.
Let's think ahead. That's where we wanna be, right?
Ms. Jen Moon, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, um, I guess my question, if, if anybody else had a question? Mr. Garcia?
Um, the bathrooms, would that suffice for that side of the building, just three stalls for each?
All of the existing classrooms have restrooms inside them. And so this building has very ample restrooms, but the travel distance to get to the others, group restrooms is at the far end, so this here, without putting restrooms in each classroom, which is highly unusual, um, this would then provide, anyone using the library or whatever, they could then use these restrooms here.
Any other questions?
So my last question is, um, I guess I, I would wanna know, was that the total price that you're giving us, or this, it does not include the plumbing and all that?
Oh, no, this, this is our total preliminary estimate for this phase of concept design.
Okay.
Um, you know, we haven't obviously gotten into engineering or anything like that at this point. This is just based, our, our range that we provided here is based on what we are seeing right now, including COVID pricing and, and everything. This is the range that we are seeing for this type of work, the same type of construction and everything.
Oh.
Go ahead, Ms. Salzeyat.
What is the current square footage of the existing classrooms?
The existing classrooms
Do you know?
Um, are, are smaller than that.
Seven hundred and something, I thought it was about.
That, yeah.
Seven forty, I'm sorry, I apologize, Madam President. No, I, I thought they, I thought I, I remember hearing it was like seven forty-three, I know they were smaller than that nine hundred, I, I'll say seven hundred just to be in the ballpark.
Right, in general, the average elementary school classroom ranges from seven hundred to nine hundred square feet. Um, and even within this district, each building, the average classroom size ranges in that range. And so, these here and all of the, um, all of the other buildings, we targeted this square footage size amongst the three buildings.
Ms. Salzeyat.
So my question to admin now is, is, is that enough space? Is that enough space to spread everybody out?
So our.
The four classrooms?
Yeah, and what we looked at was, the right, we wanted, uh, these classrooms to be anywhere between seventy-five to a hundred square feet, larger than our other rooms. And we also were looking at it in terms of potential, if in the future we have to add classrooms, we have to leave space available to add more classrooms. So with this concept design, you'll see there's additional space available, or if we have to, let's say in three years, we have to add three more classrooms, it'll be an easy add.
Are the, uh.
Ms. Velaz.
Um, is the assumption then, so, so nothing was actually checked, you're assuming, right, with the HVAC, the, um, plumbing, all of those fixtures to extend to the, um, addition, but if that's, if you find that's not the case, then all that would be an added cost, right?
There, like, like I was saying, that within this range, there is room within that budget to, um, to to take some of that into account, if we need to bring in.
It's factored in if you have to add, is that what you're saying?
Yes, because in most cases, the average project, there's some work that needs to be done to the existing systems. But if we come to it and you need, you know, a whole new transformer or, or whatever, I don't know if the, this budget would take all that cost, but some of that cost would be within that range. And as, and we can refine these budgets as we, you know, move forward and get into the engineering. But this is a very generous budget that we have here.
Mr. Sabo?
Uh, we're kind of just talking about something a few minutes ago about building up.
Right.
Are we making this possible, are the footings gonna be built, where, if we needed to build a second floor, with that specific area, could we do it in the future, just trying to think ahead, and I know we're not gonna get new buildings, but, you know, let's, let's talk about that now, I guess.
That is something that we could take into account and look at providing the footings, you know, based on the soil borings, if it would permit, we could then size, we've done that before in, in other places, size for a future addition moving up. Um, and then, you know, you're, you're within range of the current two-story portion of the building.
The backside of the building too, which wouldn't really affect much of the codes, so.
Right.
Ms. White, Ms. Jen Moon, sorry.
Sorry.
Traditionally, is it, if the footings are there, is it cheaper to go up, like?
If the building has an elevator, if the bill, you know, there, there's these things to take into account. If the building does not have an elevator, your addition would need to provide that elevator, or a space for you to add that on in the future.
Which is, yeah, I didn't think about the, you're thinking step, but.
So, next question, I know, like, with COVID numbers, um, being up in regards to, um, materials, or they have gone up, but I know that, like, lumber's on a decline, will our prices, or is that just the set number that we have as the prices are now, or is there a possibility of them changing and, and being reduced due to costs?
Yes, the, it all depends on the bidding's, uh, atmosphere at the point we put it out to bid.
Right, okay.
And so, that, that's kind of what I was getting to, as we go through the process with this, and refine our estimates, uh, and everything, we'll zero in tighter on that number.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just wondering, 'cause I know, like, right now lumber has started to drop.
Right, still quite, has, hasn't quite started to drop?
Right.
You know, so some things are going down, some things are not.
I'm just, yeah, so I was just wondering, it, that number was not set in stone, is that being the base, and then potential for more, it could be less than what it is.
Absolutely, and that's why we have a range here, it's, you know, the number will be within this.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
And, and I was just gonna comment, and, and Ja had just mentioned, you know, in regards to a second floor, and I think MO even as well. Uh, what I do remember from one of our last bonds, is that, or the one previous, anytime that, uh, you do go up, your price goes up, of course, the property has to be able to withstand and, and a, a second floor, but not only are you looking at the issue of, uh, ADA compliances, uh, so you have to have an elevator, that's, that is a given. Uh, you're going to pay the extra when it comes to the wiring and cabling, you're going to pay the extra when it comes to the fresh water, you're going to pay the extra when it comes for the, um, the, the unit ventilators, so there's, there's multiple costs, it's double, and then it triples, and then it quadruples as you continue to go up, so, I, I see the, the, the point behind that first floor and trying to focus on that.
Right.
So if you're gonna build a new school.
It could, if the ground or the property will, will, will substantiate a, a second floor, which, that's gonna be a good one, okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, so if in three years, we have to build another four classrooms, uh, where, where would we put them?
So, yeah, exactly, we would, we would extend and continue extending in this direction should, should, you know, additional, additions be needed.
Now, does that disrupt or take away from, like, play areas for the kids, for the students, or?
Right, current, so currently right in this area right here is the lower elementary playground, which is ending the, um, serviceable life of that anyways, um, and so the, that area would be relocated elsewhere on the site. Um, you know, if we were to continue out, there is another playground right over here, and so, you know, things may need to be, depending on the age of them, relocated or replaced, you know, as, as that moves out.
Okay, um, I just wanna be careful, because if we're thinking we're gonna go up, that's still disrupt, that's, that's still a major disruption to the four classrooms that are gonna be built. You know, the same thing we were talking about before, that just causes a lot of disruption, so I just wanted to make sure that we will have enough.
Now, you'll be for a house, though. No, seriously, I'm not, I'm serious, because the way you build a second floor in a building is not the same with building floor, a second floor in a house, so.
Right.
They're not the same concept.
And, and we can.
What's the difference?
It's already there, the foundation's already there, on top.
Right, you, we, when.
You don't need to move the ceiling.
If we were going to design this for a second floor, we would have a concrete, we would have the decking and have concrete up there, then the roofing, and so, when you're ready to build the second floor, you peel off the roofing, and you start on that concrete and go up.
But is that included?
That.
That prep, or whatever?
We would include that into our construction documents, if that's something that the Board and the administration would like to pursue.
Okay, so it's not part of the plan?
It's not part of our preliminary estimates here.
So, if I may, Madam President, when we asked the firm, and we sat down with them as a team, to, to look at this, we looked at it in terms of what are it is now for the next two to three years, using the funding we have available. If in three, four years from now, we have to add more classrooms, again, remember, as more students come in, more funding comes with those students, and we would make those adjustments at that time. So we wanna take advantage of this ESER funding, 'cause this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing for us as a school district, and we have five years to spend it, and if we don't spend it in these five years, we're gonna look back and smack ourselves in the head and say, what, what were we thinking?
Ms. Jen Moon, go ahead, please.
No.
Girls up?
Yeah.
Ms. Velaz?
That's Highview, right?
Right, we have the other ones here.
So, wouldn't, since they already have the second floor, don't they already have an elevator?
They do.
No.
No, Highview does not have elevator.
Oh, I thought they did.
No, they were.
They're grandfathered.
We're talking about Hillcrest, aren't we? No, it's Highview.
We're on Highview right now.
The only one that elevates is Riverside.
Highview does not currently have an elevator.
And that's grandfathered?
Yeah.
Basically, if, if you were to have a student that needs one, then you would be pushed at that time to provide access.
Where in that situation, we would just move the classrooms?
I was gonna say, or you switch things around, accounting. Kristin, got it, Kristin's got it.
Okay. Yeah, any other questions from the Board? Okay, thank you.
Uh, do you want?
If you can go to Hillcrest next, if that's okay?
That is fine, yes.
Thank you. Just 'cause Hillcrest has little more difficulties.
Yes.
Kenlock's gonna be the easiest.
So at, at Hillcrest, um, we had initially looked in this area over here, um, which is where the big hill is, um, but we had significant concerns for structural capacity of that area with the hill there. Um, we also had concerns with trying to arrange things to maintain access to the current kindergarten rooms, where you still need to maintain the windows and, uh, spacing. From the arrows, it had looked like this was a parking lot, but then we were, uh, educated that it was actually a, a play area. And so we, we did look at an option to take over that new play area as classrooms. We would relocate, we would punch through where the current, um, receiving room is, providing some storage in, in that area, and pulling the, um, pulling the, um, hallway through there. We would provide a new receiving room, we would provide, uh, restrooms for this wing. Uh, the closest restrooms are quite a distance away, um, over in this area. And then provide three classrooms. Um, we are, uh, working on getting this area surveyed, so that we can figure out exactly where the property lines are and the setbacks. But, uh, from our approximations at this point, um, we, we believe we can fit in all three of those classrooms.
Madam President, if I may, real quick, so if you can shine the laser on that green space, yes. So that green space is owned by Wayne County DNR, and we cannot intrude upon that, unless if somebody has a connection somewhere, where we can buy and fix it up, but anyway.
They have to abstain when they go in.
Exactly, no, but, uh, we still maintain that property, the custodial crew over there, they, they, they cut that property, which is, we have no issue with. So, I know a lot of people look at that green space and like, can't we do more, but no, that's, that's DNR property, that's, uh, wildlife area, a wet, wetland area. So we, that is not our property, um, we use it, the kids can go out there and play and stuff, but we cannot build on that property.
It would be the ideal place.
Can you outline that for us, can we just see real quick, what area?
Right, that.
So you would be able to.
Play.
Okay.
We can't build anything on it, not even a playground, it can be an outdoor play area, but not.
Please address the chair.
This building will not have.
Please address the chair, 'cause I'm sorry.
Oh, I can't use no, 'cause I. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Jen Moon was next.
Sorry, I was just wondering where would the playground then go?
They're gonna discuss.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Salzeyat.
Okay, so where would the play area go? Over there. Where the hill is?
Or they can play.
They won't have, that's, that's what I'm wondering. Mr. Sabo, any questions?
Madam President, if I may, that area where the hill is, there's a playground there currently.
Yeah.
So there is play area over there, so they're not playing on a hill, but there's flat area there that the kids can play on. Now, do they run up and down the hill, probably, I mean, I would, I'd probably roll down it every day, but, um, that is their playground area right now.
So behind the building, and I'm trying to go by memory, and this is when my kids were at Hillcrest. Um, I believe we only have like twenty feet behind the building, and it actually is.
It's longer.
And then after that's Wayne County's, Wayne County made some sort of agreement years back that we could use that property, they may let us, you know, for a short amount of money, have that and build on it. They're not using, just something to check into.
I will put in my notes.
Mr. Garcia?
So, to piggyback on what you just asked, um, I believe that goes back from the back door of Hillcrest, uh, maybe a hundred feet before it drops into the park. I do know that there was some conversation with the previous administration regarding that property, but what happened was, we really were focusing on taking this property here at Riverside.
Yeah.
Which became the, the, the golden apple, but we worked with their legal department, and it was really sticky regarding that, because they did not want any fencing. They wanted nothing to prevent wild, and it was basically Wayne County. They wanted nothing to prevent wild, and it was basically Wayne County speaking on behalf of DNR. They wanted nothing to intrude, um, and I, it may have been 20 feet, if I'm not mistaken, but they did not want any type of barriers-
I do remember the fencing.
With anything regarding that green space, that, that wooded area, period. So that's why, and I believe it was the first or second bond, uh, that's why it just kind of went dormant. And of course Riverside was the, the issue regarding parking and, and so on. So, um, yeah, I, I, I think the district would be very hard pressed to, to, to look at that and go any further because DNR is, is gonna put a stop to it. Because of the wildlife, that's what it is. They need to find someplace to go when the water rises.
Exactly. Exactly.
So when you say playground, um, although they're playing on there, it's not like where we could put, um, a structure, play structure, swings, nothing, right?
No, we do. We, we have, do, do we not have a playground over there?
No, not there. Yeah, there's a-
Oh, you're talking about behind the school? No, we can't build any structure.
We can't put anything. They can just play with the flat land.
Correct.
Okay, any further questions?
The other thing, um, that this project would include is a new service drive for access to the receiving room. Since, uh, the building, you know, covers their turnaround area and everything. And then also relocation of the dumpster from its present location.
So can I ask, is there an exit door for the students on that side?
Not to the parking lot, but to, to the side of the building over here, there is an exit door.
The side of the building, yeah. Okay.
Ms. Valdez?
Um, for parking or anything like that, there's nothing to do for that either, right? Because this, I mean, it's such a small area too for parking and the capacity, I don't even think it fits the amount of stuff that's there, right?
No, they park on the street. A lot of them do.
Yeah.
Right.
Anything with that?
We, well, we showed just a couple parking spaces, uh, right here, um, but it's not, you know, significant or anything.
Madam President, if I may.
Yes.
The parking there is gonna be a problem because we're landlocked, no matter what we decide to do, unless we build a two-story parking structure, which I don't think we have any intention to. But it's just one of those things, like during the school year before the pandemic, when I would go visit school, the school, I would park, I'd have to park on the street and walk up.
Oh, there's parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always tight there.
Yeah, very tight.
Okay, anything else?
That is it for this building.
Thank you. Now the easy one. And if I may preface before they begin on Kenlock, there's something I'd like to add that I didn't mention in the beginning. One of the things in our conversations about expanding our district is we have a lot of families who move into the Kenlock area. But then when we tell them, we gotta bus you to Highview or Hillcrest, it's not that they don't wanna go to those schools, but why do I have to send my child to a school on a bus when I can see the school, you know, it's a block away? And a hundred percent.
Yeah.
We really believe that once we complete these projects and we start expanding and doing these different things, we believe that there will be more students who'll probably, we're, we're estimating. I mean, again, um, I'm not guaranteeing, but we're estimating that there's multiple families in that area that will come back to our district because they can send their child right to the school that they live by. So I just wanted to put that out there as a preface as well, as another reason why we're moving forward with this.
Madam Chair, so knowing that, um, why wouldn't we add, and it being the easiest one and we have the, more land there, why wouldn't we add more than the three or four that we're projecting?
Excellent question. We had that conversation. Because we wanna move our district to homeschools. We want our school neighborhoods to be neighborhood schools. Where if a child lives in the Highview area, they can walk to school. They live in the Hillcrest area, they can walk to Hillcrest. They live in the Kenlock area, they can walk to school. The idea is that if we continue to bus students around, we're going to lose that neighborhood school ideology. Now, if moving forward, let's say we have another boom in student, let's say we get another thousand students in three years. Well, then we as a team have to make a choice. Do we build another school? Or do we add on to someplace like Kenlock and start busing more kids to Kenlock? That is a problem, that's a good problem to have, like we're having now. But I think it's more of a problem that we'd have to attack when that happens. If we build more, uh, classrooms on the Kenlock now and we bus more kids to Kenlock, it takes away from our philosophy of homeschooling. It's a, it's an excellent question.
Mr. Garcia?
Also, I think if, right now, you're being very conservative with what it is that you're presenting. If you overbuild and then we don't have it, then you, you have to factor in your energy cost uh, for a building or a section of a building that will, I mean, will it be used? Yeah, but not at its full potential.
Correct.
So I think right now, I'm just, there's no decisions here, but what I'm seeing is, here's a presentation on a conservative side and it's something that we've discussed and it's something that needs to be looked at. I think if we overdo it, and I can't remember what district it is, South Lion, I believe, where the high school was built and now it's a stage set because they were not able to, I, I think it's South Lion. It's, it's out that way. Where they were not able to occupy the building. They, they didn't have the students. They overbuilt. So just something to think about, just something for the board to consider. Thank you.
Are Lee's numbers assuming that we work with the city and get Berwyn? Or are Lee's numbers assuming that we're moving forward without Berwyn?
Both.
Okay.
If you look at the second document that we gave you with numbers, we estimate Berwyn in there. What you will see there is the numbers at Kenlock actually go down. Because what happens is all the kids will be going back to Kenlock, all the kids that live in the Berwyn area would go to Berwyn. But Kenlock's the only school where the numbers go down in, in reference to that. But I appreciate what Justice Garcia said, because that's a very good point. I didn't even think about saying it that way. We are giving a conservative estimate because with what we'd like to do with our current structures, if our partnership with Berwyn takes longer or doesn't come to fruition, we have a short-term plan here. If our partnership with Berwyn works out and it comes to fruition, then we have a long-term plan with room. And the idea as well too is something to keep in mind. As we move our district to a P-14 district and we start looking at career academies, that gives us also more options and more opportunities. So by looking at what can we use now and how does it help us in the future, we have that possibility of yes. If our numbers grow, which I believe they will, we are planning to solve that now and then as time goes on. Because let's, let's also keep this into consideration too. We don't know if, if our, if our partnership with the city comes to fruition and we have the Berwyn Senior Center and Elementary School, which is gonna be a beautiful concept. If that comes to fruition, what ends up happening there too is the homes in the Berwyn area will start also selling to more families with kids. So their numbers are gonna go up. So we are, you know, in the mindset, based on research of school districts, why school districts keep their students and why they're successful, it's neighborhood schooling. It's the fact that my preschooler or my kindergarten, my, my, my child can walk to school. I can walk to pick them up. And Crestwood School District is in a prime situation right now to start preparing that future. And with this ester funds and being conservative, if, God willing, we get a thousand more students in the next three years, we'll get the funding to support the additions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
No, I appreciate that. I really do.
Just a crazy question because, uh, obviously familiar with the school, just looking at the addition, why wasn't it put towards the front? The reason that I ask that is because I know that the playground is in the backside elongated all the way through. Seems to be cutting off the playground area from the other side of the entrance of the school. Do, do you see where I'm going? This area here? Up top, next to the blue area to the east, right there. I was wondering why it wasn't put over there, just to keep the back playground area with the playground. Now you've cut them off, that's all.
The, the reason is we were able to continue this corridor, whereas here we would've had to go out and around. And, you know, it's more, we were trying to be as efficient as possible with the space use and not have long corridors without, uh, you know, a functional use. So this here, we just continued this corridor out and then turned it for access to the hardtop play area here. And then, you know, you have all of the, the play equipment back in this area over here. As well, there is a play structure right here. So there's kind of several different-
No, there isn't.
No, no, no.
Yeah, there is.
That's the, okay, I'm sorry, not the-
Oh.
I'm sorry, I live right there. That's the only reason I'm saying, I don't, there's no play structure there. That's an open field. There's a house right behind it and there's a street over there where the bus-
Right.
Okay, straight through, cut off. Yeah, there's no playground area there. The playground is behind the blue area to the northwest of it.
They, they did add, uh, did you guys not add, there was some funds I thought that we were using?
And where did we update? I, I'm lost. Scott, you can help. Do you remember where we updated the playground area at Kenlock?
The ETA supplied a new play structure on the, uh, northeast end of, of Kenlock.
Okay.
Near the, uh, the blacktop?
Uh, by the dead end of Kenlock.
When did they do that?
Uh, summer of, summer of nineteen.
Really?
I know, I've seen one.
My kid was just playing football there a couple weeks ago and I was there with him and I didn't see it.
Because your kid doesn't play on the play structure anymore, so you don't-
I didn't have my glasses on. It's so weird, okay?
Okay, I, I guess my only concern would be that if you put that there, then you, you won't be able to see the children if they're on the other side. So you'd have to, you'd have to do something to limit access, correct?
Can you clarify what you mean by you can't see the children?
See, right now, where that hardtop is, you can, the teachers can see both sides. And if, when you're, um, extending that, if teachers are out there, they're, they can only see the hardtop and this side and they can't see the other big playground.
Well, they would, they would have to determine which playground they're gonna let the children play on and monitor them. So if they allow their children to play on the right or they allow children on the other side, the teacher has to monitor them.
Well, well, let's not forget, there's no fencing in that whole area. That, that would be my safety concern. I mean, unless we're thinking-
That's where I was going, I just didn't know.
But if, but if the teachers are monitoring the students where they're at, we don't have fencing currently anyhow.
Yeah, it is.
But during lunchtime, for example, all the kids are out together, right?
You'd have a lunch monitor on each side.
That's, that's my point. I'm sorry. I just-
Yeah. No, I understand what you're coming, but we won't, I mean, and I'm sure-
We're just thinking out loud.
Yeah, 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 no, no, no. I know, I know.
Safety first, you know, that's all.
Yeah, no, I got you, I got you. And, and, uh, no, I, I understand.
The, the long-range plan for this school, should there be future additions, they would continue out along this, uh, hardtop area. And there is the hardtop area right here that is unprogrammed at this point, other than for drop-off and pickup staging.
So you're adding five classrooms there or four?
This one is a five-classroom addition.
Okay.
And a bathroom also?
Um, actually, there is a bathroom just right down here.
Okay.
So there's one close by, so this one does not have an extra restroom.
Any other questions from the board?
When this is presented to us to, uh, vote, it'll be firm numbers coming from you guys?
Um, it, oh, go ahead, Penny.
Go ahead.
No, they're not firm numbers until it's actually taken out to bid. What we have to do is you vote to move forward with the project and then we send everything out to bid. And then you vote on each individual bid to say, yes, we want to go with this company, no, we don't want to go with this, take this out. So every stage that we bid out, that will be brought back to the board to bid, to vote on. But this is, the initial vote will be, do we want to move forward with this project in this aspect?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
No, thank you for that, that portion because I know we had some sidebar-ing back there. And my concern regarding this building as well as the high school was just the fact of the, uh, flooding that has been a problem, have been problematic there. But I can remember, was it 2005 sewer when we first had that flood? But as I had mentioned to you, I'm sure you probably will not be part of this survey. It'll be another firm that will have to come out and survey sewage lines and freshwater lines and, and so on and so forth.
Yes, actually, I have estimates from our, our, from our civil engineer for surveying. Uh, and, and we're getting, you know, the estimates are for full surveys.
Personally, I don't know what the residential area has been like during the flooding. I know that we've suffered flooding and, and specifically the high school. But I think at one time, as I had mentioned to you, the city determined, uh, under a previous administration, that a lot of the sewage lines, especially those, uh, that run north and south on John Daly, and you're familiar with that area, uh, they were, they were, especially coming from south, from Ford Road, because of the number of restaurants that had opened up in the area, they were finding grease in the, in the lines, the drain lines, uh, that they were actually plumbing through. So although there's a distance between John Daly and Beach Daly, it could still be related.
Yes.
So, uh, because as, as long as I've been here, there never were floods. And 2005 was the first one and it was, it was bad. And then obviously, we've been having them. So, thank you.
Mr. Nunez?
So, um, once everything is put out or put out, or it's approved by the board and it's put out for bidding, when are we, when is the anticipation, like, when do we anticipate starting the project on each building? Do we have a timeline or?
Penny, what's the bid timeline?
It just depends. I know that we have to get the plans approved, so it's gonna be 12 weeks, if I'm not mistaken, to get this plans approved by the state. So it's, it's going to be a longer process. I don't have an exact date.
No, no, I, I, obviously, I know like we're a hundred, you're just- Sometime next year, but it won't be-
No, and Madam Chair, if I may add, so, correct, it could be done sometime in the spring, but it would definitely be done before the fall, for the coming school year, next coming school year. And here's the good thing, is the adjustments we have made thus far, that's why they're temporary solutions. So we have spots for all our children. But coming to the fall of 2022, we'll have brand-new classrooms ready to go and we'll have everything reorganized.
Nope, that's what I was gonna ask.
Ms. Valdez?
Actually, does that, um, so you probably already took this into account, but with the expansions and it being ready for next fall, um, does that mean we'd be able to keep fifth grade and elementary?
So the, the fifth grade conversation going to elementary, that is gonna be based on if our partnership with the city comes to fruition. And if our partnership with the city comes to fruition, um, that'll be a conversation, but just to plant the seeds, uh, we don't wanna take everybody one day and move them the next. We would wanna have a gradual process so we're not displacing kids, you know, on a massive scale, but to slowly move fa, you know, move students into their new neighborhood schools. And we would develop a process where we would do it on volunteer basis, we would do it on grade-level basis, looking at siblings so we don't separate siblings, you know, so that would be a process that we will look forward to, uh, hopefully, if our partnership with the city does come to fruition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Just a comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care. And again, just to reiterate, as Ms. Morgan mentioned, uh, like we said, this was in your board packet a couple weeks now to look at. Today for discussion, um, we'll be putting it on the board agenda for the first meeting in August to, for approval to move forward with this. And then, as, as said, once the bids go out, we come back with a bid request. So please, any questions that you have as you look at this or anything, please send those to Ms. Morgan. And then Ms. Morgan can forward any questions she cannot answer to the firm and the firm will respond with any questions that you have. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you need your board committee to look at?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, moving on to the next item?
It's my show now.
I do have eight, I'm sorry. Approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that needed to be processed prior to the board approval. These purchases consist of year-end needs finalizing the 2020, 2021 grant purchases and to make sure the daily operations move forward as necessary.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Garcia?
I recommend that Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase order, orders, correction, purchase orders per attachment 5A1.
We have, um-
Support.
Support. Here we have a motion from, uh, Mr. Garcia, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Board of Education, um, approval for confirming purchase orders, are items that needed to be processed prior to board approval. These purchases consist of year-end needs finalizing 2021 grant purchases and to make sure that the daily operations move forward as necessary. Any discussion? Yes.
Thanks, Penny, for the follow-up for the Wise and St. Linus. Of course. It just triggered a thought of, um, DC. If we're getting, if we're supplying the other two schools for supplies, COVID supplies, and then getting monies back, should we have been doing that for neighboring, because you said we did it for neighboring, uh, schools, should we have done that for Divine Child?
No, because they don't fall within our federal guidelines for the title, for the consolidated app. The reason is Wise and, um, St. Linus, I apologize, fall, they fall within the guidelines for the federal Title I dollars. DC is out of our area, per se.
Range?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, approval requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for the upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment five A two.
Support?
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Garcia for the approval of the, uh, attached list of requisitions. Are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out. Any discussion? Yes.
Thank you. Um, just to further, I know we discussed this also, but, um, for Thern, and I know you'll, you'll turn, yet Thern. I was waiting for the correction.
Sorry, I apologize.
For the ten K and then for Keller Toma for the twenty-five K.
Yes.
Um, that, are you saying that was a retainer? Was, I, I guess I wasn't clear from the follow-up.
Those are open purchase orders for expenses coming up for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year so that each time, each billing each month does not have to come back to the board for approval, that we can go ahead and just pay it.
So wouldn't that have been covered with, within our retainer that?
We don't have retaining, retainer fee. We don't do retainers.
Didn't we already, um, pay that to each one?
Not this year, no, not for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So these are for future, um, services that they'll be billing us for.
Okay, so not unless we exceed are we going to owe anything more to either one of those companies?
If we exceed that, those two allotments, then I'll bring another purchase order back to the board to have approval for additional funds available.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, approval of service agreement for Ticket Spicket. The Crestwood Athletic Department would like to utilize Ticket Spicket for its online ticketing needs for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. This will allow spectators to purchase their tickets online, thus reducing the amount of cash collected at the gate. There is no cost to the district for this service. The fees are included in the ticket purchase. A copy of the agreement has been attached.
Madam President?
Mr. Garcia?
Uh, I will recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Ticket Spicket, is that correct? For the online ticketing for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, as per attachment five A three.
Any support?
Support.
Um, okay. We have a motion from Mr. Garcia, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Ticket Spicket for online ticketing for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as per attachment five A three. Any discussion? Ms. Kaminsky?
Um, I just wanted to say, I think this is really an overdue thing that, um, we needed to bring in. It's harder and harder to get a group of parents to volunteer and do this, and I think it's a good move, so thank you for your efforts.
Ms. Janun?
So I have a, like during the, the golf outing, like is there any other way of, I, I guess this is an option. It's an option, but I know we will, while we were sitting there, um, like through Apple, which I know Apple Pay is not necessarily, you know, the best option for, for this, but is there any way of linking an account and a number where if parents come in, they can Venmo or Apple Pay? It's so much easier and you don't, there's no fee to the district, there's no fee to the spectator. Um, it just goes right to our account and it can be verified. I don't know.
The problem that we've been running into Apple Pay and Venmo is you actually need a social security number to do those. And so therefore, because we're not, we don't have social security numbers to tie, I can look into it further. Um, but every time, every research I've done, it's done to tie into a social security number versus a tax ID number.
I wonder if, I, I mean, I'm not sure if, if, like there's another option through them that we're just not aware of that would open up to a district. Like a business type Venmo, yeah.
I can work on researching that further.
I don't know what, like I, yeah, I mean, it just, there's just no fee linked to it and for the spectator or even for us, it goes right to our account.
Um, Ms. Falas?
So for this one, I, I think it is great that we're doing that. Um, would they have to just, uh, like show their phone at the gate or at the event and, and or if they don't have this, or do, do they have to print it out? Or other people, obviously, some people don't have access. They can just still pay at the gate.
Correct, yes, they can still pay at the gate. Um, however, it will show on the phone and a lot of, like for, um, M H S S, M H. Yeah, sorry, too many letters. Um, when they did it, they didn't use Ticket Spicket, but they also used a similar one, so any district games that anyone went to, they had to show on their phone and purchase that way. So a lot of the state tournaments and the district tournaments are already going to that aspect.
So it's just something that they show, it's not something like whoever's at the gate has to verify by, with their phone or anything like that?
The, the person will print it, or they'll have it on their phone and they just show the phone and they click the button that says they've used it.
Okay.
Mr. Sabal, did you have a question?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, my question is, is this similar to what we use with the, um, uh, the play that we're having?
Oh, yeah.
Are they using something similar to this?
Yeah, not Ticket Spicket, they use, um.
Drama Club? They're using something, right?
That is something that we have to look into.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, they use a different program.
I didn't hear you.
That is something that we have to evaluate.
Oh, okay. All right. But it's something similar, okay.
Similar, yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, it's recommended that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year, I'm sorry, um. Why is that one? Okay. It's recommended the Crestwood Board of Education approve Ticket Spicket for online ticketing for twenty-one, twenty-two school year as per attachment five A three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Thank you. Number four, approval of RISA contract for illuminate DNA. The Crestwood School District has been utilizing illuminate DNA. Illuminate DNA provides comprehensive assessment tools that allow teachers and administrators to understand each student's learning needs, align the right instruction and intervention supports at the right time, and accelerate in learning for all. The software also provides reports which help staff to discover patterns and insights through data visualizations designed to answer key questions at the student, class, school, or district level.
Madam President?
Mr. Garcia?
I would recommend that Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year contract with Wayne County, I'm sorry, Wayne RISA for illuminate DNA for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, per attachment five A four.
Support.
Okay, um, we have a motion from Mr. Garcia, supported by Ms. Janun, for the Crestwood Board of Education to approve the one-year contract with Wayne RISA for illuminate DNA for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as per attachment five A four. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Thank you. Number five, approval of athletic training services agreement. Crestwood School District would like to retain the athletic training services from Beaumont Hospital. We have been utilizing these services in previous years and it has been very beneficial for the student athletes. The agreement would go into effect on August first, twenty twenty-one, and go through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Falas?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the athletic training services agreement between Beaumont Hospital, Inc. and the Crestwood School District to be effective August first, twenty twenty-one, and terminate June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as per attachment five dot A five dot five.
Support?
Supported by Mr. Garcia. Okay, it is recommended that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the athletic training services agreement between Beaumont Hospital, Inc. and the Crestwood School District to be effective August first, twenty twenty-one and terminate June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as per attachment five A five. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, thank you to Beaumont Hospital. I don't know how many years we've actually been doing service with them, but they do provide, uh, very knowledgeable staff who work well with our coaching staff as well as our students and have always made themselves available and available to those that are in need, so thank you to Beaumont.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number six, approval of Great Start Readiness Program GSRP contract. The Great Start Readiness Program contract is up for renewal. This is the annual contract with Wayne RISA. This program services preschool-aged children, providing them with the opportunity to get an early start on education. The program is designed to prepare the students for kindergarten, providing structured, social, and emotional support as well as new opportunities. Crestwood School District has been allocated ninety-six half-day slots or forty-eight full-day slots. This program includes three classrooms with morning and afternoon sessions. I am attaching the contract for your review.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Janun?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached GSRP contract with the Wayne RISA, with Wayne RISA for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as per attachment five A six.
Support?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Janun, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached GSRP contract with Wayne RISA for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as per attachment five A six. Any discussion? Um, the only discussion I have is I would love to see this program grow so we can serve more students, but again, I guess we're limited to space. So hopefully, we can grow it in the near future.
That's the goal.
Because they are giving, um, they have given an increase, which means that you will be getting what a kindergartner or a first or second grader would get, so hopefully, we can move on with more students in the upcoming years.
Very soon.
Okay, um, we have a motion from Ms. Janun, supported by, uh, Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That the Crestwood Board of Education, um, approve, uh, the attached GSRP contract with Wayne RISA for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as per attachment five A. Any, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Five A six, sorry. Any, all in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm learning, so thank you all for your patience.
You're doing great.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of resolution jewel litigation. True Law Firm has provided the district with information regarding a class action lawsuit against Jewel Labs. The lawsuit seeks monetary compensation for damages incurred by schools related to the vaping epidemic. Attorneys are representing districts on a contingent fee basis, meaning there will be no cost, there would not be any cost to the district unless there is a financial recovery from the district.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Elzaya?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached resolution from Thern Law Firm regarding the jewel litigation, see attachment five A seven.
Support?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzaya, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education, um, approve the attached resolution from Thern Law Firm regarding the jewel litigation, see attachment five A seven. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Garcia?
So, um, I'm just curious, did the district ever purchase any vaping detectors, devices of that sort? That would be the only.
We did not because of the pandemic here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, the good thing is that this will provide that, right?
Correct.
If it was.
Money comes.
If this class action lawsuit goes through, we'll get funding to purchase and to have mechanisms in place to deter vaping.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number eight, approval of cross-country camp. The Crestwood High School cross-country team would like to attend a cross-country camp at Camp Michonne in Hillsdale, Michigan, August eighth, twenty twenty-one through August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Approximately twenty members of the cross-country team will depart at approximately eight AM on August eighth and return at approximately two PM on August tenth.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Elzaya?
Um, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the overnight cross-country camp for the Crestwood High School cross-country team, see attachment five A eight.
Support?
Um, okay, Ms. Elzaya, supported by Mr. Garcia. Did I have that right? Okay, we have a motion from, um, Ms. Elzaya, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Board of Education approve the overnight cross-country camp for Crestwood High School cross-country team, see attachment five A B. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to wish the cross, cross-country team a great trip.
Okay, um, any other discussion?
I was gonna say, I'm just glad that they can go.
All right.
When my, my son attended and he came back, and that was probably one of his most memorable trips, so.
To her, okay.
The costs incurred for this trip covered by the district whereby the.
The students.
Okay, um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, if I may, Madam President, real quick, Trustee Sabal, I'd like to throw a cheap, uh, advertisement out there. If more, more people get involved in the golf outing, they could use that donation money towards their specific sports, but we'll talk about that more later.
I was there. It was a great outing.
It was, but I had to throw that advertisement, cause it was perfect timing.
It was a great outing.
I do have one informational item, we did speak about it at the study session regarding the transformer RFB. We just, I just wanted to make sure that we got into it, but because we spoke about it, I do not necessarily need to reiterate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to business report, I'm sorry, um, personnel report. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. All right, so our first action item today is for the appointment of a custodian, Ms. Lori Morris. Ms. Morris has worked as a cleaning environmental specialist at Garden City Hospital, in addition, as a hand cleaning specialist. Ms. Morris is familiar with working with a variety of cleaning agents for sanitizing and disinfecting. She's dedicated to providing a healthy and safe environment.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Janun?
I recommend that the Board of, Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lori Morris as custodian. According to the MEA contract, MEA agreement, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support?
Supported by Mr. Garcia, that's who I heard. Um, okay. It is recommended by the, um, Crestwood. We have a motion from, uh, Ms. Janun, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lori Morris as custodian, according to the MEA agreement, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Our second action item today is for the appointment of a GSRP lead teacher, Ms. Mona Alaway. Ms. Alaway earned her bachelor's in child development from Ashford University. She has three years of experience in the field of early childhood. Ms. Alaway has experience in preparing activities for children, assisting the lead teacher in preparing daily planning, and she is now obviously very excited to take on the role of leading that, um, planning and instruction for students.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Mona Alaway as GSRP lead teacher, according to the GSRP schedule, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support?
Mr. Garcia? Okay, we have, um, a motion on the floor from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education, um, approve the hiring of Mona Alaway as a GSRP lead teacher, according to the GSRP schedule, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third item today is for an appoint, for the appointment of a third-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary. The recommendation is for Ms. Khadijah Jawad. Ms. Jawad earned her master degree of K-12 educational leadership from Eastern Michigan University and her Bachelor of Science of Elementary Education Math Studies. She has experience creating and implementing lessons for all core subjects to meet the needs for all students and has experience with the MTSS process. Ms. Jawad is a graduate student of Crestwood High School and is very excited to be returning to the Crestwood School District.
Madam President?
Mr. Garcia?
I am very honored and privileged to be able to read this, that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Khadijah Jawad as a third-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary School. According to the Crestwood Federation of Teachers contract, MA, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation. and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Supported by? Who?
Either one of us.
Fawaz?
We both said it at the same time.
Okay.
I think we should all sing it.
I know.
Just confused.
Yes, you are confused. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Garcia, supported by Ms. Fawaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Kadisha Jawad as a third-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary School according to the Crestwood Federation of Teachers Contract, MA, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion?
Madam President. It's, uh, very nice to see that, and I remember when she was going through her schooling, not only here as a student, but through her college, uh, and how she had interviewed me a couple of times. Uh, she is the oldest, the eldest sister of the late Zach Jawad.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I know that her parents, her grandparents and her late grandfather, um, and specifically, specifically her brother would be very, very proud, and our proud to the fact that not only, uh, is she in a field that she truly has a, a passion for, but she's here at home again.
I was just gonna say, I was glad she was coming back home.
Yes, and I want to say congratulations to her because, well, once we approve it, um, yes, she's been all around our children and we know what a good family they are, so we're thrilled to have her grow through the system. Okay, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion pass, motion passes. Carries. I'm getting there.
Our next appointment is for a first-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary. Um, the recommendation is for Mr. Anthony Puente. Mr. Puente earned his bachelor of science of elementary education, mathematics and reading from Eastern Michigan University. He's currently pursuing a master's in reading. He has made a commitment to making students' learning engaging and fun while maximizing student academic and social emotional performance and establishing positive attitudes in themselves and their learning. He's also certified in Orton-Gillingham and trained in phonics first and LLI.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janun.
It's okay.
She called you, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Anthony Puente as a first-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary School. According to the Crestwood Federation of Teachers Contract, BA, step three, effective pending acceptable criminal back, criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Oh.
Support? Mr. Garcia?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Janun, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestboard, Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Anthony Puente as a first-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary School. According to the Crestwood Federation of Teacher Contract, BA, step three, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Okay, since there's.
Just glad he's. I'm not gonna say it, but I'm just glad. We don't have enough male teachers, especially the elementary level, and I think that's, I don't know, I, I think that's a great thing, so.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third recommendation today is also for a first-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary, Ms. Dana Kronk. Ms. Kronk earned her bachelor of science in education from Eastern Michigan University and a master's degree in TESOL from Western Michigan University. She has received various awards for overall growth and improvement within her classrooms from Scantron and NWA standardized testing. With her experience, she's able to prepare and deliver instructional activities that are aligned with curriculum maps that include activities for differentiated instruction to meet the varied learning styles, abilities and needs of students in a culturally sensitive environment. Ms. Kronk has also completed training in PSYOP.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dana Kronk as a first-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary School. According to the Crestwood Federation of Teachers Contract, MA, step five, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Ms. Najah Janun, Ms. Janun, that the Board of Education approve the hiring of Ms. Dana Kronk as a first-grade teacher at Hillcrest School according to the Crestwood Federation of Teacher Contract, MA, step five, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion carries to make Najah happy. Okay.
And our last recommendation today is for the appointment of a district-wide school nurse. The recommendation is for Ms. Janine Zaid. Ms. Zaid earned her bachelor's degree in nursing from Wayne State University. She has three years of experience as a registered nurse and has worked with Boma and Henry Ford Hospitals in experiences ranging from critical care to ambul, ambulatory care. Ms. Zaid has provided patient care and developed wellness policies and plans. She has a strong background of working with teams made up of members with several specialty areas in order to coordinate care.
Madam President.
Mr. Garcia.
Uh, recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Janine Zayed as a school nurse for the Crestwood School District according to the Crestwood Federation of Teachers Contract, BA, step eight, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Um, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Garcia, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Janine Zaid as a school nurse for the Crestwood School District. According to the Crestwood Federation of Teachers Contract, BA, step eight, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? I have something to say. This is the best thing happening. I know that when my son was here, um, he had severe allergies and, uh, I hate to say it, but it was a really bad situation and there wasn't anybody that could take care of it. So this is, I actually have to drive him to the hospital myself, which breaks my heart, um, remembering all that. But anyway, thank you for doing that and the kids did, do deserve to have a real nurse on staff that can, um, help with any cases that need to be dealt with. Okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, superintendent's report.
We have one informational item.
One more?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
This one's just informational.
Uh-huh.
Um, this one is regarding, uh, the calendar with the pre-labor, Labor Day start. Um, we had in our negotiations with the teachers' union, negotiated our tentative calendars for the next three years, all of which reflect a pre-Labor Day start. Um, the reason for the pre-Labor Day start for students is to have a better balanced calendar um, that spreads out and includes our professional development um, and also, um, the different breaks for the students, um, to best balance their school year and their learning experience. Um, additionally, it's especially vital coming off of the COVID pandemic and the kids having been in virtual and hybrid school to get them in here and, and re-acclimate them into the school environment as soon as possible. In order to have the pre-Labor Day start, um, we do have to apply for a waiver with the state of Michigan, which we have done. So that's step one of the process. Step two in the process is, uh, the state requires us to hold a, uh, public hearing regarding the pre-Labor Day start where they have a representative who conferences in. And in that meeting, basically, um, I will present the reasons for the pre-Labor Day start to anybody who chooses to come, um, and, um, answer any questions that the public may have. The meeting is currently scheduled for Monday, August second at nine AM. It'll be here at Riverside Middle School and we, we will be sending out, um, some additional information, um, on, through the website, um, to inform the community about the meeting. Um, and again, after that hearing, they then make their final decision as to whether or not they will grant the waiver and then we can completely solidify calendars at that point.
Okay, thank you for the information. With that, uh, moving now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Education. Uh, first, I have no action items, so we'll get this done quick. Uh, second, I did all my speaking. I needed to speak in the study session. Uh, first, I want to congratulate and welcome, uh, new President Berry to, well, not new to the board, but new to your position. Uh, Vice President Kaminsky, uh, Treasurer Garcia, and, well, you know, this is your second go-around. Secretary Janun. Uh, also, I would like to, um, thank specifically, and I know they're both gonna give me a dirty look, but Trustee Janun and Trustee Sable. I, I, I'm going to do it because they both were at the golf outing. Our, our, this wasn't our first golf outing, but it was the first district athletic golf outing where every sports team could be represented and we had multiple teams there. Uh, Trustee Janun was helping as well as Trustee Sable and we appreciate the time. Look, you put in this time here at this meeting and you put in that time on that Saturday to help, so thank you. I want to thank also Coach L, uh, Mike Schley, and so many others who did a phenomenal job putting this outing together. Uh, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee Janun, Trustee Sable, I think we had over, uh, fifty foursomes.
Fifty foursomes?
Fifty foursome groups.
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifty, fifty, five-zero. I think we had over fifty groups.
Yeah, I think we had.
Oh, then we had more people that showed up in the beginning that didn't golf then. Alright, so I counted it up wrong.
I wasn't gonna correct.
Okay, it's okay. Um, I counted wrong then. It was too early in the morning, I guess. But, uh, anyhow, it was a great event. Um, I'm really hoping that every year we grow. Um, and I'm gonna be talking to the committee about, you know, looking at next year. I mean, we, they put this together really quick with the pandemic and everything. And the one thing that we did differently this year, and I appreciate everyone for doing this, is when someone signed up for the foursome, you know, it was a hundred dollars a golfer and, um, you know, there were donations, there were sponsors that covered a lot of the cost. But on the donation form, it stated, where would you like your money to go? Twenty-five percent of your proceeds are gonna go to the athletic department. Where would you like the other seventy-five percent to go? So you could choose which sport. And the idea and the reason behind that is because we want all the teams part of it. You know, if we can get every team out there with, you know, a few of the parents, this helps our kids. Um, it was a great event. I appreciate, I appreciate the teachers that were there that helped out. I mean, I don't want to start naming names because I'm gonna miss people, um, but it was nice. It was a lot of camaraderie. It's what Crestwood needs to be. Um, the empathy, the love, the teamwork, the passion, the friendship, and, um, I appreciate that. Uh, additionally, I want to, uh, send a shout-out to our supervisor of custodial maintenance, Mr. Scott Jacobs, as well as Joe Garcia, the head custodian over at the high school, and the entire custodial team across the district. You know, we come off this pandemic, then we have a flood, getting ready to build an ark. I don't know what's gonna happen next. I'm just waiting for the locusts to swarm in.
Yeah, find the materials to build it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, but, you know, we're handling, again, now that Ms. Kaminsky's not here, I'm not gonna be looking at you as much. We're, we're, you know, I can't say, I, I, I can't put in words where we are as a district today compared to where we were when I first came in, and I'm gonna toot my own horn. I'm sorry. The people that we have in our district step up. There's a flood, fifty guys and women show up. There's a pandemic, people show up. There's a golf outing, people show up. We don't have to beg people to do what's right. And I ask the board to continue with the focus on positivity, empathy, process, procedure, systems. That's who we are. That's what's gonna make us go from great to phenomenal. I said, post-pandemic, the pandemic was easy. And I mean it. Come September, this is when the real work will start. We have children who have not been in school for two years. We have construction projects in place. We have a lot going on. And we have people who really do a phenomenal job with that. A cabinet phenomenal team. And as a team, nothing can stop us. And I'm really looking forward to what the future holds. And on a final note, to all the parents out there and to the board, school will open on time. We'll be fine. I promise. We may not have a gym floor, but everything else will be okay.
You mean you can't control the rain?
I can't control the rain. I can't control the rain. I wish I, I can't control the pandemic. I wish I could. Um, but school will be open on time. We'll be fine. We'll make adjustments as needed. Our people adjust. They do what's needed to be done. And finally, um, I, I want to say that, um, with the current situation with, you know, all this talk in the news about COVID, we are starting on time. We will have more messaging coming out in August, once more information becomes available. But I want everyone to know, we have all intentions of being face-to-face. We have all intentions of going and having our students in our buildings. But I'm not gonna say going back to the way things were, because we're gonna be better. We learned a lot from this pandemic and we're gonna grow from it. So that's my message. I appreciate everyone. Welcome to your new positions, other than you, Trustee Janun, your, your second term round. And, uh, I appreciate all the work, Trustee Sable, Trustee Elzayat, Trustee Fawaz, that you do. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Solom. At this, um.
Can I make a comment?
Can we get public comments first? And then you get your?
That's okay.
Cause us, we're just gonna do it in order.
That's fine.
Okay. Any public comments, um?
No.
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 None?
They stopped.
Okay.
They got tired. They went to sleep.
Board comments, Mr. Sable?
Yeah, I, I think Dr. Solom had mentioned Coach Jamal L. Um, you saw this year. I've been watching him do it for years. And, uh, we've been doing it a long time. He, he just does a fantastic job with it. I know you had a committee that was put together, but, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Schley will, will tell you, he had the lion's share of a lot of the work. And I just want to, you know, let the community know that, um, he is such an advocate for the kids that he's a fantastic football coach and a fantastic person. So I just wanted to commend him for all the great work he did around that golf outing. So, thank you.
Ms. Elzayat, any comment? Ms. Fawaz?
Um, have you discussed with the team as far as when the fall comes and the students are here, um, how we're going to view or what we're gonna do as far as masks and the different grade levels? Are we mandating it, not mandating it, like?
So cur, currently, our stance is it's optional. And the reason why our stance currently is that it's optional is because adults had an opportunity to, to get the vaccine if they chose to. We're in a situation right now where we have to allow people to do what they feel comfortable doing.
About under twelve.
I, I still feel that people have to do what they feel comfortable doing. Um, if parents want their children to be masked, they have that option. Some parents don't want their children to be masked because their child has a hard time with it.
Reading or whatever.
Yeah, so we're, we're, at this point, it's optional. Now, if the mandate comes down.
Right.
That's different. If a mandate comes down, we will follow that mandate. But that's why I'm saying, we're not out there publicizing much right now because things could change in the next two weeks.
Right.
And I don't want to be that one person or that one district that is constantly flip-flopping. So right now, where we are is according to the information we have, things are optional. If things change from the state level down or the federal level down, we will adjust based on the mandates as we did when the pandemic first arose.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Janun?
I was just gonna say, I didn't do anything at that golf outing, but tried to check people in and get, you know, had to be reminded a few times to tell them which, um, where they were starting, but Mr. Sable and the rest of the team did all of the work. I just literally sat there and kinda got scolded a couple times.
Welcome to football coaches.
I was like, you're kinda making me nervous, but it's okay. No, it was.
You missed out on a great lunch, just so you know.
Yeah, you were stuck around.
You know what? I didn't, I didn't put enough work in to feel like I deserved the lunch, so.
It was only at four o'clock, so from eight to four, we were there, but yeah.
Right, so, yeah.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Thank you though.
Nope, nothing, other than I hope everyone enjoys the rest of their summer and thank you for administration for not enjoying your summer and doing all this work.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, congratulations to everyone and, uh, yes, again, thank you for everything that you do. Mr. Jacobs and your staff, greatly appreciated. And, uh, my sentiments out to the community who, as well as us, has suffered from the water and, and the damages, but to those as well that are still in the, uh, the cleanup phases, um, throughout the entire city of Dearborn Heights, so, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone, for the nice comments. Um, I did want to say one more thing and Ms. Janun is probably gonna go crazy if I say this, but I'm gonna say it. I had the opportunity to go to prom and I have to say, if it wasn't for Ms. Janun, prom would not have happened this year. The students went to her because there was nobody to represent and she took it on and helped them set up the venue and get everything together. and she took it on and helped them set up the venue and get everything together. So thank you so much for doing that, for putting students first, um, we appreciate what you did. And the other thing, I echo, uh, what everyone else said about the custodial maintenance. We know it's been a rough road. I don't want to say expect more, but I didn't expect this one to happen. I was out of town and I was frantic, thank God I had no, nothing happened at my house both times. I was very fortunate, but I know that you guys have been on pins and needles and you're taking on the task as you need to. We appreciate all your efforts and your work, your hard work. Thank you so much for that. With that being said, um-
I will make a motion for adjournment, Madam President.
Support.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.